All right, seven o'clock. I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Larkspur Planning Commission, Tuesday, October 28th, 2025, at lovely Larkspur City Council Chambers. So, roll call.
Yes, Commissioner Wagstaff.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Chair Swisher.
Here.
Commissioner Chalmers.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Hall.
Here.
All five members are present.
All right, great. First, next item is public comment on matters that are not on the agenda. Any member of the public that wants to address the Planning Commission regarding items not on tonight's agenda, speak now or forever hold your peace. All right, anybody on Zoom?
No.
All right, seeing none, do we have any community development directors' reports?
I've just got, I guess, one brief update for you. The ordinance that you all reviewed and recommended approval to the council laws regarding the SB nine changes, and that's the urban lot splits and development of multiple residences. They did approve that and had a second read it there. I think it's the October, was the October 15th meeting of this month? So that'll go into effect 30 days from that meeting. And that's the only update I've got for you.
All right, great. All right, next, public hearings. And the first item is AD La Cuesta, APN 070264-03, Chambers and Chambers Architect, applicant Karen Joseph McConnell. So this is a public hearing for a design review to allow for demolition of an existing residence in construction of a new three-story, 5,572 square foot residence, including 532 square feet of basement and an attached 527 square foot garage and an attached 700 square foot ADU. So it's one of variants to allow a front setback of 10 foot nine for the new garage where 15 feet is required. However, the existing garage is currently at 10 foot nine from the front property line. An FAR exception to allow a FAR of 0.326, where 0.25 is the maximum allowed by code. 924 square feet is more than 50% below grade and exempt from the FAR calculation. Existing FAR is approximately 3,188 square feet or a .22 FAR. And finally, a slope use permit to allow for 290 cubic yards of cut and 101 cubic yards of fill with 189 cubic yards to be off-hauled. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Alex. Carrie Spence from Swanstream Studios, joining to present this project to you tonight. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I will show my screen for the presentation. Okay, so as noted, the project is located at AD La Cuesta. It is oriented, not quite directly north, but in terms of the project discussion tonight, north is, Project North is the driveway and the site itself slopes up towards the rear with side setbacks, including a shared driveway up to 70 and 60 La Cuesta that are much further up slope and the closest adjoining neighbor at 90 La Cuesta. The project is seeking to demolish the existing residence and pool, as well as some of the site walls, and construct a total structure of 5,572 square feet. This includes, as the chair mentioned, square footage that is basement, and I do have a couple of slides in the floor area because it's a little complicated for this project. The, but the overall square footage, including basement space, is a 43, 45 square foot, single-family residence, a 700 square foot accessory dwelling unit, much of which, over half of which is basement, and a 527 square foot attached garage. The entitlements we'll be talking about tonight include designer view, the slope use permit, the floor area ratio exception, and a setback to the front setback for a variance. The project was previously heard in June of this year. And the setback at that time also, and the pictures are on the slide, just to refresh your memory of what that looked like. The front setback for the garage had both a large attic space, but it was just under seven feet, and deck above it, and requested a much larger square footage and a much larger FAR variance of .4. The Planning Commission's direction at that hearing was to reduce the garage massing, that if it was simply the variance, they could make, likely make the findings for that, but did not want to see the attic spaces and the massing that that contributed to above it. They did have concerns with the bulk and mass of the home and the fit within the neighborhood with direction to the applicant to reduce the square footage with the direction that at least 1,000 square feet was necessary to get to where the, it would be fitted in better with the neighborhood context. There were also comments regarding the relationship on the east side to the upslope neighbor at 90 La Cuesta, including additional articulation needed both on that side as well as other areas of the building. Privacy concerns on the east side were discussed, and the commission requested a shade study due to concerns about white and shade. The adjoining neighbor at 90 La Cuesta was at that hearing and also expressed those concerns. The project was resubmitted about a month ago, and just general changes that were made to the project. And I believe the applicant had noted at the last hearing that they, once they saw the story polls, they felt the attic and deck above the garage really needed to be eliminated as well. Those are now gone. They've reduced the square footage by over 1,000 square feet, and that's adjusted square footage, so it's not in the basement. Most of the reductions are on the main floor, 655 square feet on the upper floor. So it was on the portions of the home visible from the street. They did address some of the adjoining neighbor concerns with additional step backs on the east elevation, reduce some of the massing at the front in addition to the attic space, and added articulation so that all three sides from the street do now have step backs. Additionally, the east elevation now all has clear story windows, which are windows that are, you know, above eye height. And that upper floor is setback so that it actually has the same setback as the existing house. The spaces in that are bathrooms, closets, and a small study in a hallway. Additionally, they did submit a shade study, and I have a couple of images in my presentation of that. The site plan is generally the same as the existing home with the driveway and the garage location, garage slab proposed to be maintained. And the home generally is super T or L shaped, and that is also being maintained, but extended, expanded towards the rear and a little bit to the south. The pool retaining walls and upper terrace patio area are all remaining in the same location, but proposed to be replaced. So the ADU and basement floor plan, and I think this drawing from the architect actually shows pretty well, the sort of darker hatched area is all basement, which includes a portion at the top of the screen that is part of the main house. And, and that is elevator, mechanical room, storage, and stairs up to the main level. And then a larger portion of the ADU. The ADU does daylight out to the same patio shared with the pool. The garage and main floor plan, you can see the red dashed outline is the footprint of the former proposal that was before you. And you can see they, they have stepped back from the, the top of the screen, which is the adjoining uphill neighbor and that side setback, as well as some reductions on the, on the west side of the house. And for the upper floor plan, it's, this is where, like I said, the bulk of the reduction has come from, mostly along the east side again, to step that back further from the adjoining property and as well as shorten it at the, at the south side of the rear yard portion of it. They do also have a reduction on the bottom of the screen, which is the west side. They do have a proposal where they would like you to look at an alternative that includes a study in that area. And I do have a picture of that later on in the presentation, but I kind of left that as a separate component, so we could look at the main house and as presented. This is the front elevation. The red outline shows the existing home. And again, the garage is in the same location. And with the outline, the lower level is actually kind of dashing in the grade at that location. The west elevation, and this is probably the, this is the largest elevation. And I did ask the architect for a image on the lower left as seen from person height with the proposed fencing and landscaping. This is kind of in that shared driveway area so that you could see not just the bird's eye view, but also what you would actually see in terms of bulk and mass from the street. The south elevation, again, this would not be seen from most places, but does also stepped back to a deck and then stops before the slope really changes and becomes more steep. And this is the front elevation again, to kind of look at the relationship between the adjoining neighbor at 90 La Cuesta, which is a one-story ranch, although it is upslope from AD La Cuesta and does have some vegetation in between, mostly at the front of the AD La Cuesta property. There's a beautiful oak tree there. And this is the east elevation. I also included a perspective of that, so you could see better the articulation on that side as the commission had requested, and the further step back from the adjoining property. The home does still have flat roofs, but much more articulation, especially on the second floor with the large attic and deck eliminated from the front. Additional nooks and step backs on the east side and a little bit more variation on the upper floor of the, of the front of the home. As noted, the shade study was submitted. I did not include any photos of the morning timeframes because frankly, they're all shaded by the very steep slope behind the structure. And so both properties are in shade more or less until afternoon or midday. And so the, I have three photos that are sort of the two hours before sunset. And that is when the, when the difference in the, in the shading would really occur. The lower left in winter also comes in at midday a little bit, just because of the, the time of year. But as you can see from this, there is a little additional shading on that south wing of the house. But it does not go, go further into the property to the backyard beyond that, beyond that wing and the hill slope that is in that area. In terms of the sun, front setback variance, as noted, the commission, and I have the June design here, did note in June that the bulk and mass of that was too much within the setback. But given the fact that the setback is already in place, it's not a further encroachment. It's proposed to remain at that same location. And there is 20 feet between where the road actually starts and the, at least, and it goes up to about 23 feet in the garage. It will still have the appearance of a 20-foot setback. And you can see in the lower, lower image, the roof is changing from that angled slope to a flat roof, which is a little bit taller in the front, but also just as less, lower in the back just due to the flat versus sloped roof. In terms of the floor area ratio exception that's being requested, I did want to provide a breakdown of the square footage. And so this is a chart, the chart is also in your staff report. But the overall, as I noted, the overall square footage is 5,572 square feet. When the basement areas are taken out, and they're taken out both the primary unit and the ADU, so I listed those on the side. The square footage is 4,00648, which is a, an FAR .326. The code allows .23 square foot as a base, and that's based on the 27% slope of the property on average. And then it also, and this is now in effect us of October 1st, so I believe this is the first hearing, maybe the first hearing, that the ADU square footage bonus is allowed for new construction that you're hearing. The, for this project, the only, it's only 308 square feet of ADU that is not already basement. And so that gets added to the square footage. And then the calculated FAR for that is .25. As noted, the project is requesting .326 on that. And then I did include the breakdown of how the project has changed in total. The change from June, including basement square footage is 1,178 square feet. About 100 of that is, is basement, so just over 1,000 square feet of adjusted floor area has been reduced, a 9% reduction in the project. And then we do want to look at the FAR study. This is through the 300 homes within, the 300 foot, sorry, the 30 or so homes within a 300-foot radius of a site. The current home does have an FIR .21, and therefore meets the allowed .23 for a single-family home. The, I did outline both the proposed with just the main house and the garage and the proposed total that includes the ADU. And the reason I did that is because I didn't look through the records and none of the homes that are, starting at actually 101 La Cuesta that are .3 or larger include ADUs. They are all just the one unit of the single-family home. And so I felt like, since they all could build an ADU, what would that, you know, that would obviously change their FIR, FAR if they were to do it. Additionally, that you can see that there are a few homes that have a larger FAR already. And it's actually a larger delta when you look at what they're allowed FAR is as well, which is less than .2 for each of those. And so it is, unlike the last presentation, where it was the largest, both in terms of square footage and FAR, they have reduced the project to be a little bit more within the range of the neighborhood. And then, as noted, and I will let the architect talk about this more in their presentation if they wish, but they did submit an alternative request that would add 80 square feet on the upper floor. And that circled in orange here, that would be to add a study on, off of the, the bedroom in that area. We have received two public comments on the new design. They expressed, continued to express concern related to the size and scale of the home and also opposed the setback variance, since the house is being completely rebuilt. They felt they should meet the setbacks or couldn't meet the setbacks. And then one comment also expressed concerns related to parking on the street, particularly in the stretch, and if a larger home would exacerbate that and wondered if additional parking could be provided. That concludes my presentation. Staff is recommending the commission hold a public hearing, take public comment, discuss the project, and if you concur with the findings, approve the project subject to the findings and conditions in the report. Of course, your other options are to provide modified conditions or discuss and continue the project for further modifications or deny the project.
Can I ask a question? Hi, Carrie, can I ask some FAR questions?
Sure.
So I just want to make sure I understand all the various FARs that you just told us. So I guess I'm looking at three different numbers here, because you had said that the, what they're requesting is then, if you, if you take out the ADU and the underground space as an FAR of point of zero, of point 30, but then when you add in the ADU, no, .25 is what's allowed. 030 is what they're asking for, but when you add in the ADU, it's 033. But then in the staff report, it talks about a total FAR of .36. So I just, I, I guess I'm not sure what the difference is between the .33 and the .36. Because a .36 would take it above kind of the average in this, in the FAR study.
Hold on just a moment, let me grab.
I don't know. That's what I'm asking. I wondered if it was, yeah, I wondered if it was a typo, but.
Yeah, I think it may be in that point, because it is .326.
Do you know what I'm referring to? It's in the, okay, so that's just a, it's in the floor area exception portion of your staff report, right under the table.
Right, I apologize, it should be .326 or .33, basically, yeah.
Right, go back. Yeah, now, okay, that makes much more sense, thank you.
And that doesn't include the ADU, right?
That does.
It does include the ADU. Without the ADU, it's .30.
And then the .33, so the .326, that does include the ADU, but does not include the basement.
Correct.
And how many square?
And I'll just show this chart that kind of has the.
But how many square feet are in the basement?
So the basement is 924 square feet. And that includes basement that is 527 square feet of that basement, sorry. Done the math on this a million times myself. 532 square feet of the basement is for the main house. And 392 square feet of the basement is for the ADU. And so if that ADU square footage wasn't basement, they would still be allowed to have that, and that would be added to the FAR.
Wait, say that last, last sentence again.
So the ADU, this middle line, the total ADU square footage is 700 square feet.
Right, and that's exempt from the FAR, oh, it's a bonus to the FAR.
But they only get a bonus up to the amount of adjusted square feet. So the only square footage for the ADU that is included in the FAR to get is the 308 square feet that is not basement.
So that's 308 is included in the FAR ratio?
Correct, it is, but 392 square feet of the ADU that is basement is part of that total 900 plus square feet of basement.
So the 924, which is part of, includes some of the ADU, does not get included in the calculation for the FAR?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and what would be the FAR if you did include the basement?
Ah, good question, let me, so the next chart, 3280 is what the house gets. You, they would then be allowed an FIR of .28.
Maybe this is a question for Alex. I thought we decided that you could do an ADU at the beginning of the project, and it didn't count your floor area.
The, the ordinance that you guys recommended approval on and that was adopted phrases it as a bonus rather than an exemption. So it's, instead of being removed, it's just the maximum that you're permitted based off of whatever your percentage is with the slope and whatnot, is then increased by the equivalent amount of square feet of the ADU that you propose, up to 800 square feet. And in this case, because, just to use around, number half of the ADU technically isn't even floor area because it's subgrade, only the half that would count under as floor area under the city's definition is then added to the maximum allowed floor area.
And that's already been accounted for in our speed.
Yeah.
Okay. But the idea initially was that people could do their ADU ahead of time, or at the same time, they're doing the whole thing and not have it count, right?
So, well, when it was first, when the ADU ordinance was first adopted, the first configuration of it, it was phrased as an exemption, but then in this new iteration, it is, it is a bonus. So the, it's, it's sort of been tweaked.
To encourage people.
Yeah.
To do it, right. Yeah, that's the point, I think. The civic point of all this is to encourage people to put ADUs in for housing.
Yeah, and if I remember correctly, the reasons for the switches, HCD didn't necessarily like the phrasing of exempting it and preferred a bonus.
It's effectively the same thing, you end up in the same place, they just get an additional.
But if you don't subtract it, it doesn't, that doesn't do you any good. It's not that 382 feet.
You get your.
Well, it's been a lot, it's been added to the .23, so we're comparing it against it officially. I mean, it's six in one hand, half dozen in the other, but I think, yeah, the, the point of it is as, as intended, I think.
So.
Any other questions?
Questions for the staff? Let the applicant speak then.
All right, welcome.
Good evening, thank you for being here. My name is Kevin Hardy, I work for Chambers and Chambers, and I'm a project architect on this project. Again, the planning staff did a great job of describing the project in their staff report, so I don't have much to say. I'll give a brief synopsis of what we've done to address the concerns of the Planning Commission and the neighbor at 90 La Cuesta. We reduced the total square footage about 1,600 square feet, which gave us about a 1,000 square foot reduction in FAR as requested by the Planning Commission at our previous meeting. Majority of that total reduction was taken from the upper floor to reduce the sense of mass that you guys had an issue with, and we all agree that it looks much better now than it did before. Of the 655 square feet removed from the upper floor, about 70% of that was taken on the side facing 90 La Cuesta to address their concerns of having that looming building next to them. And then we stepped the upper floor back to, around the house to increase the articulation and give the sense of reducing the mass. The east side of the house was pulled in to match lineup with the existing house, except at the main floor, there's a portion that sticks out beyond that, but that's just at the main floor. We removed that attic space and the deck over the garage, which was, we saw from the story polls last time, was way too much. And then finally, the window heights at the upper floor, there was a concern with privacy. All those windows facing 90 La Cuesta, the sill is at five foot six, which is basically my eye level. So we just look out and you wouldn't be able to even see their roof from there. That's all I have to say.
Can you tell me a little bit about the alternate plan? It's just the point, just to put a study in, that it was as kind of an afterthought?
It, it was something that came up, the owner wanted to look into, but we had, we were just about to re-cement, and we had, were just waiting for our renderings from our renderer to come in, and those take a while, so it was a last minute thing, yes. Yeah, so it was just one, something that you could look at and it's something you would consider.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got a quick question about the, the basement, storage, and mechanical room. I'm just curious, is that like HVAC equipment, or is that the pool equipment?
No, it's not the pool equipment, the pool equipment is located. No, it's not the pool equipment. The pool equipment is located behind that wall, subterranean behind the wall. It's for HVAC. It'll be radiant heating, water, water heaters.
Okay.
You're putting, you're putting radiant heating in?
Yeah.
Wow. Efficient.
And the elevator goes down to that level just to access the storage area?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Brock, any questions? Hammer?
No question.
Sasha?
No, I just needed to understand, yeah, the FAR, which I didn't know.
Great. Good. All right, so are there any members, thank you for of the public could like to speak on this application? Nope, anybody on Zoom?
If you're on Zoom and you want to speak on the application, you can raise your hand.
All right, we'll just bring it back to the commission then. Why don't we start, oh, I don't know, that side?
Said I could for missing a meeting. I will say I was not a fan of the design originally. I think it's a much, much improved design now. Still not a fan of flat roofs, but that's just me. Happy to see all of these changes. And I didn't see, did I miss any comments from the neighbors at 90? I don't remember seeing any. Were there any comments from the neighbors at 90?
No, we did not receive any comments from that neighbor.
I do think that, you know, the things that we recommended have been taken into account and really appreciate that, and I do think it is a, a much, much more attractive design.
Okay.
Well, I have to admit, when I first read the staff report and I saw the FAR of 3.0, 0.36, I was on the phone to Alex saying, why is this sill so large? But I'm glad to find out that that was actually a typo. So I'm a lot happier now. I really thought it was just going to be much too large for the lot, so. So I actually, a lot of, what I, a lot of thoughts and comments I had are really not relevant anymore. I think it's, thank you for taking into account what we recommended. And I thought it was a lovely design before. I think it works better and it's not as, as imposing as it was previously. And then with the FARs, I understand it now, I think it, it's, it's so much better. So I can make the findings.
Yeah, I generally agree with my fellow commissioners. I, I think the house is, it is a big house. But, you know, looking at the modifications that were done and the, the FAR study, I think it's reasonable and the slope use permit, I can appreciate that the project is going sort of underground because it's sort of, it hides floor area from the, from the neighbors. And so I can make the findings for slip use permit. And then the setback is the same as it, as it is now, so I don't have an issue with that. I do hope that, you know, I was looking at some of the, the floor plans. I do hope that the ADU is truly used as a, an accessory dwelling unit, you know, for and, and not just as a pool house, but it meets our requirements. So there's not really that much that this body can say about that. So I think I can make the findings for this project.
Speaking the mics, we're getting it for the record. Thank you.
I think I addressed it last time that two of our kids have muscular dystrophy and so does my husband and my daughter, unless there is a cure next, in the near future, she will be in wheelchair. And that's why we have so much space and that's why we want the ADU. Because eventually a caretaker hopefully will live there and it allows my daughter to get down to the pool and clean some of that.
Okay, well, that's great to hear. Well, not, obviously, yes, it's great to hear that it'll be used as a, as a dwelling unit.
Yeah, okay.
I think also that the design is a lot, a lot better. It's taken into account some of the comments we made last time. I would not have a problem if you wanted to add the study, although it probably kicks the FAR up another point 002 or something. I don't know. Anyway. Yeah, I don't know whether we need to comment on that or not.
Commission supports the 80 square foot design issue.
I think we wouldn't.
All right, so I get, I get to go last. This, this is a good example of why I like how this commission works because, you know, in our first iteration, we made suggestions and I'm really appreciative of the fact that the architect and the owners took those into account and hopefully mitigated some of the problems that the neighbors had with it. I think I agree with everybody here that the design is much better. And I like it. I think it's not, you know, I think it's quite nice. I don't have any problem adding the 80 square foot study because it adds point, like Brock says, like point, less than point one. So I would have no problem making a motion to include that study if you find it important. It's nice to have a study. I mean, it's nice off the bedroom especially. So, and it doesn't impact the visual elements of the house. It doesn't affect shade or anything I could see other than it gives you a tiny increase in, in FAR. So, fine. So I can make the findings for all the things and would support the study. That's it? So can we have?
Can I add actually that there were two comments to this and I just want to confirm that all the commissioners did read them and we do appreciate the comments that come in. And we do take them into account, so I just want to acknowledge that because there were two written comments that we saw in the package.
Yep. The one about parking, I, I don't really see that's being terribly relevant, to be honest. I mean, I think that it, there'll be parking regardless of the size of the FAR. I mean, it's not going to impact people who come visit the house. But anyway. All right, a motion. Brock, do you want to make a motion?
Sure. I would move approval of project 25003, AP number 07026403, including design review, slope use permit, floor area exception and setback variance and also the addition of the study.
Second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a vote?
Yes, Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
And Chair Swisher?
Yes.
Okay, your motion passes unanimously. The decision is subject to a 10 day appeal period. Interested parties can appeal by filing the required form then fees with the city clerk within that 10 day appeal period. Thank you.
Congratulations. What's that? No, I didn't turn it up. It's on. Oh. Oh, did I?
No.
Okay, all right, no, he did not. All right. Let's go on to the next item, which is the pump station at 90 Diane Lane in Heatherwood Park, APN 022-110-07. Department of Public Works, the city of Larkspur. Oh, yeah, Brock has to recuse himself because he lives in Heather Gardens and too close to this. Plans designation 24-27, request to replace the existing pump station with a new concrete structure with rooftop platform that will hold the elevated equipment, including a new generator. And the request is for a design review for the structure, a setback variance within 15 foot rear setback worth three foot two inches proposed. I don't understand that. Anyway, any conditional use permit for public utility, public uses and public building in the R1 district? So can we have the staff report?
Yeah, I'm gonna give you just a brief rundown of the entitlements here and then I'm going to turn it over to Julian Skinner, the public works director, to get into the details. But yes, good evening, commission. This item is PLN 24-027 for 90 Diane Lane. The property is located in the Heather Gardens District or neighborhood, I should say. And the overhead view you can see on the left here, it's the highlighted parcel, kind of the upside down L highlighted in blue. And then the street view of it is on the right there for you. It's the existing pump station. The project seeks to demolish the existing pump station and construct a new 565 square foot pump station in a similar footprint. It would be a smaller footprint than what is currently there. And it requires you to approve design review, a setback variance for a rear yard setback and a use permit for a public utility building in an R1 single families district. So as I mentioned, the setback is for the rear yard, the required rear yard setback in the R1 district is 15 feet. This would be three feet two inches. Staff, as noted in the staff report, has made the findings to support a variance, given the, the odd layout of the lot, I shall say. It requires a use permit for a public utility in the R1 zoning district. And again, per the staff report, the use already exists on the site and would not be substantially altered. And it would meet goals established in the general plan and complement the residential uses of the district. And as you likely remember or may remember, this was first heard by your commission on July 23, 2024. And there was lots of discussion at that time. Your discussion centered around refining the architectural finishes of the structure, the addition of landscaping and information on the sandbag station that is proposed or was proposed, I should say. And public comment that was received centered around enhancing the landscaping and pedestrian experience of the area. Again, the concrete finishing and minimizing hidden spaces there that may be used by high schoolers. You have received four public comments and they all center around, I would say, some, some of the similar topics. Mainly regulating the parking area used by city staff and RVSD staff, whether that's on the actual property or street parking. The providing of exterior electrical outlets for people to use in case of emergency. And then a neighborhood group has submitted a couple of letters in addition to the requests for the electrical outlets, also requesting the addition of an accessory structure that would house emergency supplies for the neighborhood in the event that they were needed. So staff recommends that you hold a public hearing, consider public testimony and approve the project subject to findings, conditions of approval and a class two sequel exemption. And that concludes it for me. I am going to turn it over to Julian. All right, Mr. Skinner.
Good evening. Julian Skinner, I'm the public works director for the city of Larkspur. So I have a couple of slides here. This is the same presentation that I provided last year, but I've added a couple of slides to highlight the, the notes that were brought up at our last meeting. This summarizes the items that Alex just spoke about. And then this is the street view that I think was also in Alex's presentation. It's not, doesn't like me. Oh. I'm too impatient. This is the site plan and as Alex mentioned, the new building is not actually a building. It's going to be a concrete platform. So it's a little shorter than the old building and the main reason for that is because we're in the flood plain, so we want to elevate all the equipment up, so it's above elevation 10, which is our base flood elevation. And so we still end up with a concrete structure similar to what's there today, but it's a little bit smaller because it's housing all of the mechanical and electrical equipment on top of that pad. And then the vaults where the pumps are, this is a joint sewer pump station and storm drain pump station. So both Ross Valley Sewer District, Sanitary District and the city have pumps here for each of our own systems. Those are underground in the vaults, which are the circles that you see on the site plan. There's no building for them to be in, so that makes a footprint a little bit smaller. It just needs to be able to hold all the electrical equipment on top. So the new footprint is kind of the orange there and the blue there that you see on the right side is the remainder of the existing footprint where there won't be a new building. Okay. This is the elevation from Diane Lane. Again, the same as we presented last time, it's a little faint here, the orange line that you see going kind of horizontally across the middle, that's ground level. So this is just showing that there are some components to the structure below grade. Those are our vaults. And then above grade, the blue dotted box is the outline of the existing building today. And then the new platform is kind of the rectangular area that's under the red long rectangle. Or the red long rectangle there is the fencing that would be on top of the concrete pad that will screen all of the mechanical and electrical equipment up there. So you can see it's a little bit taller than the existing building, but a little bit smaller. And this is just taking that same Google street view and superimposing the new building on top of that. So kind of the red rusty colored area on the left here, the boxes that shows where the new structure will be. And so you can see just to the right of that, there's kind of the faint brown color. That's the rest of the building. And then just beyond that, you see a bush and then there's some chain link fencing with slats in it. That's where the existing generator is. And the path that came up a few times during our last meeting for the kids that go to the, to the high school is just to the right of that. So they go around that pump station and off through to Redwood High. And so what I attempted to do here was show how we're proposing to address some of the comments that came up at the last meeting. And so again, we're looking at the same visual that I just showed on the slide before. But I've added some color here to highlight the new structure. So kind of the the yellowish color on the bottom, that's where the concrete pad will be. Those are the vertical walls on the concrete pad. And then above that, the kind of slightly darker yellow color, that's the, the fence that will have the slats in it for a visual buffer to the equipment that's behind there. And then we did commit to doing some landscaping and so I've talked with our maintenance folks who'd have to look after them, the landscaping out here. Got a recommendation from them for landscaping that would work here and that would be easy for us to maintain. And then that's shown in the green, kind of covering the front, two thirds of the building visible from Diane. And then I put some white Xs on the two components that will not be part of this project when we're finished. So the one immediately right of our yellow box is the remainder of the old building that will be gone and will be open. And then the generator moves to on top of the concrete pad, so that enclosure over to the right isn't there. And so you see this blue arrow is where the kids go around the structure today to get to the path going to Redwood. So we're actually pulling away from where that path is, so we'll have less impact on the pedestrian travel over there than there is today. Next slide, this is looking at the same thing in the plan view. So again, the blue arrows on the right here show the pedestrian path over to the, the high school. The brownish dashed rectangle on the left hand side, that's the footprint of the new building and then the green landscape area in front. And then the smaller dashed area here, that's roughly where the old generator or where the generator was originally is where we were proposing to relocate the sandbag station. So previously, the sandbag station was off to the left or to the, to the west of the station, the left on this site plan. It was kind of a makeshift station that was there with a plastic orange K railroad markers and sand was dumped in there. Not very well used, certainly wasn't our, isn't our primary location. When we did the site layout for this, we basically just identified an area where we could rebuild that if we wanted to. But some questions did come up initially about what would it look like and what would the construction be? It was not included in this project. We just wanted to identify a location where we would have room for it if we wanted to. Uh, it was not included in this project. We just wanted to identify a location where we would have room for it if we wanted to bring it back. So um, at this point, um, we're not planning, and this will not be built. The sandbag station will not be built with the project. Uh, we'll take up a separate effort uh, to determine whether we need to have a second sandbag location here. Again, it is in the floodplain. Um, it's one of the lowest areas. That's why there's a pump station here. It's not an ideal place to have a sandbag station. Um, certainly usable before an event, but once we start getting rain, it's probably not a great place where we want folks filling up uh, sandbags, because we do have crews that need to come and tend to the, the pump station and have trucks driving in and out when we have those kind of events. And, and from my understanding, it's not very well used um, today. So we're considering consolidating and direct folks that want sandbags to go to Piper Park. Um, so that's um, the updated site plan. And then the next slide is just a kind of a highlight of the planting that we propose. So we've got a planter in front of the building uh, that we can do a double row, so we would have uh, kind of a hedge, is the pittusporum. Uh, there's two different uh, variations. There's many different variations of it. Uh, but we're looking at something that will grow up as a, as a hedge uh, to cover um, the structure. So that's kind of a formal hedge is shown on the left, and then kind of a, a more informal hedge. Um, growing a little bit more wildly is shown in the middle. So um, we'll figure out which works, uh, which works better, probably somewhere in between. We definitely want it to grow up uh, to a height where it um, can cover some of the concrete, but probably not have it look as boxy as a real uh, formal. And then in front of that, we're uh, proposing um, a row of uh, liliums. So this will be something that will flower and have some color to it. So uh, the example we're showing here would be a, a low growing. It's ba- it's basically, it's a lily. So it's a kind of like a, a grass plant that has white uh, white flowers for some, for some color. And then the next slide shows what we're proposing for um, the concrete. So initially, we're just proposing it to be gray uh, standard uh, concrete. Uh, but we did look at two things for an enhancement. One is providing some texture to it. So we look at some other um, examples, and again, the photo here is hard to see at the bottom right. But this is the City of Novato's standard bridge, concrete bridge rail detail. It's a sandstone color, and it has kind of some rough vertical ribs that are etched into it. And uh, one of these is partially aesthetic, but the other thing it does um, is um, it doesn't stop people from tagging it, but it makes it less attractive uh, to tag with graffiti, because it's got uh, some relief uh, to it. So it's not just a blank canvas. Uh, we actually had the contractor do a test panel, so that's what you see um, on the left there. Um, to make sure that um, we could get it with the, with the forms that we were using. And then uh, we're also proposing to color the concrete. So this is um, a sandstone color. The actual technical color of it is, is shown there, but it's kind of a sandstoney color similar to what's um, out there today. So um, these are how we propose to um, enhance the project to address the uh, comments that we received at the, at the last meeting. So we got the landscaping along the Diane Lane frontage of the building, and then uh, both texturing and coloring uh, for the concrete. I think that was my last slide. I know there's some public questions that came in. Um, I'm happy to uh, talk through those too, or I'm available for any questions you might have.
One question I had is if you didn't, do you do the sandbox in that spot where the generator currently is? Would that be used as parking? Because that seemed to be one of the issues that um, letter writers brought up. So would that be an option?
Yeah, it could be used uh, to park vehicles there. Currently, uh, right now, um, there is room to park two vehicles on the site and leave uh, an eight-foot path for pedestrians to both get to the park and to the, the high school without um, having to park on the sandbag area. If you didn't have the sandbag area there, uh, then there's a potential for another uh, onsite parking space. Yep.
So as a follow-on to that question then, so it sounds like if there's no sandbag area, you're just going to asphalt that whole area that the existing building is there, but is going to go away. So
Correct.
It's just going to be, okay, like concreted.
Yep.
How do you deal with um, the portion that's underground? I mean, I used to live kind of close to there in William. And it floods. I mean, there's water, and how, how do you keep water out of that uh, subterranean structure?
Um, so depending on which one it is, so there's two underground structures. One is a storm drain, which is ours. The other is the uh, sanitary district's sewer pipe. Um, they're a lot more concerned about getting water into their system than we are. Ultimately, our system takes the water from the gutters. Um, so we definitely don't want groundwater in the summer, but otherwise the pumps will be running and we'd be paying for that electricity. So um, there is um, there is some ceiling that goes around the vault lids, and the vault lids are slightly elevated from the pavement um, to stop the water from getting in. But at the end of the day, it's not that big of a deal for the storm drain system if the water gets in there. Uh, the sewer have um, a lot more ceiling on theirs, because um, their water, our water from our system just goes into the creek. Their water goes through a series of pipes, other pump stations, it goes to the treatment plant, and it's very expensive on the back end. Anything that gets into that vault has to be treated, whether it's sewage water or it's rainwater. So um, they're very committed to keeping uh, water out of their uh, structures. They have uh, monitors on their structures, so they can tell um, when there's flows that there shouldn't be flows. And then they go and they address their uh, structures and see if they need additional ceiling or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, it's a challenge. Okay.
Um, regarding the landscaping, just to be sure I was looking at the plan correctly, is the land, is the greenery going to go the entire length of the wall and, and round the corner?
No, it goes about two-thirds of the length, because there's some equipment at the west end of the building that we need access to that we can't cover up.
Oh, so what is that, like a door? Or what happens at that?
Yeah.
And then connected to that, what happens at the end where the current sandbag station is? Because there's a wall there too.
We don't have landscaping. We only have landscaping planned from the elevation of the building that you can see from the street.
Uh-huh.
Um, there are a lot of pipes that come out of both sides of the building. On the other side, we could probably fit some landscaping in there. Um, it might be something that would need to be on a um, on a raised bed as opposed to planted in the ground and probably lower in height. I mean, we may be able to carry like the lilies around, but I don't think we can put anything with significant root structure on either end of the building because of the utilities that run under there.
Because you look right at that, when you're coming down the path from Rose Lane and the, the playground there, you, you look right at that wall as you're coming on the corner with the basketball net is, hoop.
Yeah, we can see if between here and a little bit further back, there's room to plant some trees. There's just, there's a lot of utilities running through there. Uh, but we can take a look and see if there's opportunities to do some additional planting um, through there.
I mean, it might just be helpful even just to stop any kind of vandalism or, or graffiti.
Make it less visible.
Yeah. Um, and then one of the comments that came up in the last meeting we had when you were here on this was just um, to, to ensure there weren't any like hidden corners or areas where kids could kind of hide behind. I think there was a staircase, and originally you had it so that people, the kids, like, it, there was a space you'd go hide behind, in, behind the staircase. Is that still there? Is that now?
That'll be, that'll be fenced off. It needs to be accessible, so it'll probably be a gate with a lock on it, but they will not be able to get in behind. And yeah, there's like a three-foot gap. I think it's the uh, the setback that Alex mentioned. Um, but that will be, that will be fenced off.
That's all be fenced off, okay. Um, and there was a comment in the, the, the letters that we got on um, having was, it was a, somebody help me here, was charging, charging station was one, and then having like medical equipment. Was it medical equipment? It was, yeah, medical equipment, like to store it. Are those things that we can accommodate?
Yeah, so um, there was a request that since the building is going to have emergency generator power, that it may be available to the public for uh, charging devices during uh, power shut-off safety events. Um, but we haven't designed it with that purpose, and it's not. If we have an event where the pumps are running and the generator's running, it's not really an area where we want people congregating, charging their iPhones and, and things like that. Um, you know, we've had uh, folks come to the Central Marin Police Authority uh, community room before when we've had P S P S events. They have a generator. Um, the new library that we're constructing is going to have solar panels and battery backup, and we're planning on having uh, the community rooms that are in there be available for people to come in and charge their events. I think that's a much better environment in the situation where there's a power failure than having folks around a, a storm drain pump station where there's probably going to be some activity uh, going on. And then the other question about one of the NRG groups uh, wanted to put a storage shed. Um, that's something we can evaluate. It wouldn't be part of this uh, project, their freestanding uh, sheds that they put equipment in when they have um, events um, and the neighborhood um, has a, has trainings, or there's actually an event where they need to uh, meet at a location and pull equipment from. Uh, sometimes they're um, at a residence of somebody within that group, but sometimes they have uh, they don't have any private space available, and they have in the past asked the cities um, of Corder Madera and Larkspur, um, if some of their uh, sheds can go on uh, public property. And we evaluate them on a case-by-case basis. I just got this request the other day, so I haven't had a chance to fully vet it. But we'll go through the same process we do with other requests for that.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Any other question?
Any, is there any member of the public that uh, wants to comment? That's on. Just introduce yourself and where you are.
Excuse me, I'm Nadine Arsham. I live at eighty-eight Diane Lane, next door to the pump station. Um, I'm happy to see all the improvements made to the design. Um, I've been asking Mr. Skinner for an elevation for months and didn't see any of this until tonight, so glad to see it. Um, the comment I had about the electrical outlets, just want to make sure that since we have the opportunity to put in electrical outlets that will be powered by an emergency generator owned by the city, that we're being long-sighted and not short-sighted. This may not necessarily be for the purpose of people charging their phones. It might be electric vehicles the city owns that need to be charged during a power outage. Could be any kind of equipment, but I've talked to the contractor on site who told me it wasn't a big deal to run an outlet, since there will be electrical runs inside the structure, platform, whatever we want to call it. Um, and we will have that generator available. I just want to make sure that we're thinking about possible uses in the future, again, not just for the public, but for the city itself also. Um, as for the landscaping, you know, we just uh, had landscaping put in at the pump station within the last three-ish years, um, and it ran on two sides of it. I'd like to see that continued or brought back since it was torn out to build this facility. We'd already established that it was a good idea to have landscaping, both for the graffiti control and for aesthetic reasons. Um, that wall, the west wall that was faced the park, did have trees planted alongside it. It would have been nice to have planned, uh, planned to have planters to some extent along the stairs on the east side or the fence if possible, but whatever we can do would be great. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Brock Wagstaff, I live at sixty-six Diane Lane, and uh, I'm really glad to see this thing getting done. It's been very entertaining watching it. Um, my only comment would be that uh, you know, maybe next time we can get some elevations that we can see, because it was very difficult on the drawings I had to see what's actually being done. And I think what you're doing is, is quite nice. And the only other thing, uh, again, because I couldn't tell on the drawings, I want to make sure that access to Heatherwood Park still exists there, and I presume it does. That's it.
All right, thank you.
And?
Hi, uh, Michael Lewis, uh, live at twenty-three Midway, uh, right down the street. Um, I'm glad to see the elevations were so somewhat of an elevation's uh, being presented, because uh, definitely need some screening, because we don't want to be looking at that equipment up top. And uh, I assume that's going to be a, a fence of some toy with slats in it, is that correct? And then how about the uh, area around the uh, stairway? Is that going to be? I, I'd hope that that would have uh, you can't see through it, because you kind of want to screen that area too.
Heaven.
I've been in Heatherwood, Heatherwood Gardens for twenty-five years. I don't think we need a sandbag area. I've never seen it. At one time, I've seen a person load a sand there, so I don't think that's needed. Um, yeah, but Brock said, maintain the pathways to the high school and uh, Heatherwood Park, important. And I have no objection to the setback rule. As far as the color goes in the, the building itself, I think uh, it's going to get tagged. You might want to consider paint that's correct or free, graffiti-proof, because that building gets tagged a lot. Repaint, repaint. Yes, paint may make better sense than uh, uh, integral color, color concrete. Um, that's it.
All right, thanks, Ben. All right, any Zoom comments?
Did you have one hand raised on Zoom? Ben Sellers, who should be able to unmute and speak now?
Yeah, hi, this is Holly Ames and Ben Sellers. We're at nineteen Midway, right next to Mike Lewis and right around the corner from Nadine. Thanks for um, you know, taking care and getting upgrades on our pump station. We know it's important to the city, so we appreciate that. From our perspective, um, I think the, when you look down our street, that's what you see. Um, I'm right on the path, so I see a lot of bicyclists who are now bummed that they can't go that way. So it is a really important thoroughfare, and it's one of the great things about our bike path thing and the walking for the students. So as much as we could landscape the multiple sides of that, and you know, if we did asphalt over that sandbagging thing, um, I usually see like one, max two trucks there. So like three doesn't seem necessary unless we're saving it for that structure to house the emergency equipment. That I can see that as a value there. Um, yeah, so um, I think the landscaping is important. We love, right, our beautiful parks and our paths. So if you could consider, you know, nothing that's going to get in the way of any of your infrastructure, but just some, some boxes, and then the point about the um, the, the, the tagging is, is well taken. I would just plan for that and figure out what's going to be the easiest for your crews. Um, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
There's no other hands raised.
All right.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, a question for you. It, in the event that um, the neighborhood wanted to gather, like themselves, organize plantings at a later date, can they go ahead and do that?
Um, they could do it if they organized it through the city, yes.
They would just have to work through you?
Correct.
Okay.
And you have anything else? So let's bring it back. Any uh, comments here? Liam?
Yeah, sure. Um, well, I appreciate the uh, first of all, I mean, I think we can all agree that pump stations are uh, you know, one of those infrastructure things that are hidden, but are very important to how we live and that we're able to live here. You know, at three or four feet above uh, sea level. So I think that it's important to recognize that, you know, these improvements are, are, are crucial, right? Um, I, I do appreciate the uh, sort of the, the addition of the planting and the uh, you know, the, the architectural finished concrete. I think it looks better than, than it did before. Um, I think that it will, you know, I think that uh, if the neighbors are willing to, you know, go to the effort of uh, providing additional plantings, or you know, maybe there's a tree that can block it from uh, from the park side. Um, that, that would be great, but in terms of this application in front of us today, I think I can make the findings for all of the, the three items. And um, you know, once again, want to emphasize the importance of the, the project to allowing us to remain dry.
Good point. Okay, um, yeah, I mean, I think if, I mean, we've heard quite clearly for Yeah, I mean, I think if, I mean, we've heard quite clearly from the, the commenters tonight and also myself. I think that landscaping is really important around this building. I mean, it's very important, but it, it's not very pretty. So um, I don't know if it's a budgeting issue, but I can't imagine the cost of the plants in, in light of the cost of this whole project is that much. So I would be very grateful if you could look at continuing on. I know you've got your infrastructure you've got to work around. But you said you had, you had some ideas, so if you can, if you can incorporate additional landscaping. And yeah, I mean, we, we just had a project that I think you led in, in my neighborhood. And I know that the neighbors are being in their own land, they're putting in their own plantings as well now, so I'm hoping they're working for you. And then somebody mentioned anti-graffiti paint, which I thought was a good idea too. So I don't know how much more expensive that is, but that might be.
Yeah, there's um, and that's typical of most of our concrete structures. There's two different versions of um, anti-graffiti coating that you can uh, put on a structure. Uh, one is called sacrificial and it's quite inexpensive. Uh, but basically it lets you wipe the graffiti right off. Uh, but once you do that, you have to reapply it. It's sacrificial. The other is quite a bit more expensive, but it's uh, permanent. So typically what we'll do is the uh, the first go around, we'll try it with the sacrificial. And if it becomes a location that has repeat tagging, then we do something that's more uh, permanent. But yeah, it's pretty standard procedure these days for any exposed concrete surfaces to have a anti-graffiti coating on them.
Great, so you're already doing that. That's fantastic. Okay.
Does that paint or substance have a color? Is it colored?
No, it's clear.
Oh, it's clear. Okay.
Um, yeah, that was the, I mean, other than that, I think I can also make the findings.
Uh, I have no more questions and, and I can make the findings.
The only issue um, that came up that we didn't address is putting in outlets or for, for, for uh, and I can understand why, I can also understand from a safety standpoint and a congregation, why the city might not want that in an emergency. So I think that's going to be something which you can discuss with uh, engine, you know, engineering, et cetera. But, you know, of course, you know, we do have power outages and so I don't know, I don't know what to say. I don't think we shouldn't have to mandate that. However, I don't think that's really in our purview.
I, I think that that's uh, like my, my personal thought is that um, if the city needs to use its generator to charge things, I would assume that there would be an outlet somewhere because there's going to need to be an outlet for power tools, et cetera, right? But I think that uh, there are other areas that the public can go to, to.
Well, the library will be nice addition.
The library, the police station.
Police station, fire station, et cetera. And people, not, not having home generators, but just a home battery pack, you know, and those kind of things. That there's some new ones that are pretty awesome and they have a lot of power. You know, so, okay, I can make the findings. So let's have um, a motion?
Me?
Yeah.
Um, I make an emotion to approve project number twenty-four oh-two-seven. That's the right one, right? Yeah. A second.
A second.
Okay, Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Uh, Chair Swisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
A motion passes with four yeses, uh, zero nos and one recusal. Interested parties can appeal the decision by filing the required form and fee with the city clerk within the ten day appeal period.
All right, excellent. So uh, the next item on the agenda is a heritage. Oh, Brock can come back now. All right. Uh, the next item is a heritage tree removal permit for one hundred Piedmont Court. Steven Crystal applicant. Um, property owners requesting a permit to remove one redwood tree in the front yard. That is a healthy redwood tree, but causing damage to the driveway. The trunk circumference is pretty large at a hundred and six inches at twenty-four inches above grade. We have the staff report.
Yeah, that's working. Okay, so yes, this is the heritage tree removal request for a hundred Piedmont. It's HTR twenty-five dash zero-two-two. The um, project is located on a hundred Piedmont Court and on the right is a view of the tree. And you can see it's kind of right at the apex of the entry driveway. It's a redwood with a trunk, dang it, the diameter is thirty-six inches and the circumference, as you've just said, is a hundred and six inches of two feet above the ground. And a heritage tree is defined as any tree with a trunk circumference of fifty inches or greater at that height level. So the uh, property owner is seeking approval to remove the tree. As you've noted, it is a healthy tree, but it is causing uh, the upheaval of the driveway, which is causing access issues for uh, handicapped vehicles. The provided arborist report finds that while the tree is healthy, as I've just mentioned, it's rendering the driveway unsafe and inaccessible. And that root cutting, root cutting, which would be the preferred treatment method in a case like this, would destabilize the tree and cause it to fail. And he believes the only corrective, uh, the only viable corrective action in this case would be removal, stump grinding and replanting a smaller native species. So the city did notice the tree removal permit. Uh, and as the commission is likely aware, there is a protest period of fifteen days where anybody can protest the removal of, of a heritage tree. We did receive a protest which cited the aesthetic and ecological value of redwood trees, the northern spotted owl habitat and the ability for the owner to repave the driveway. Uh, the, the arborist report kind of speaks to the ability to repave the driveway comment. And I will just note that the property owner did reach out to a qualified ecologist who has determined that the, there are no nesting owls at that tree. They did not nest this year. And that as long as removal occurs before nesting season next year, which would be February one, twenty-twenty-six, there would be no impact. Uh, so staff recommends that the commission hold a public hearing, consider public testimony and render a decision on the requested removal of the tree. Uh, the owner is here with a presentation for you and I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, sir.
Hi there, I'm Steve Crystal. Can you hear me okay?
Hmm.
Uh, I've lived at uh, at a hundred Piedmont Court for eight years with my wife. We moved there because we love living in the redwood trees. So the site is a very steep lot on a steep street. And what's hard to appreciate from the pictures is that the driveway is really steep for about ten feet. And then we've got about another fifteen feet of runway where we parked two cars. So what I wanted to do is to show um, in a moment, uh, we basically have a couple of alternatives. What we, what I'd hoped to do was to maybe be able to shave the roots down or figure out some way to remove some of the roots. So a couple of years ago, I contacted tree masters and worked with an arborist there to figure out whether there would be some way to be able to just remove some of the roots or be able to kind of make some accommodation. We've thought, thought about maybe making a box to be able to pave over the box. Uh, and basically could not come up with a way. One of the considerations was using a chemical called canstat, which uh, basically retards the growth, but uh, the arborist couldn't say with confidence what effect that would have on the roots. Apparently sometimes what it does is it basically prevents more energy in action in the canopy and in the tree and sends more energy into the roots. So we've been at a loss about how to be able to address um, these issues with the driveway. So it's a driveway with asphalt that's in ill repair. It was in pretty bad shape when we bought it eight years ago. It's become worse. It's been patched over time. And it looks like maybe the previous owners, in order to try to address this, had tried to kind of build up in an area where the kind of sensible way to address this would be if it were on a sidewalk, you'd say, well, just raise that part of the sidewalk and we'll have a little ramp that goes up and down. But what I wanted to convey here, can you go to the next slide please? Uh, so this doesn't really give you a sense of how steep it is, but the tree here is right at the apex of the hill as it comes down. So you're seeing another view here. So if you go to the next slide, what it's done is it's taken a slope that was already fairly steep. Um, steep enough that it is too steep for a, a family member. My father-in-law who has MS and he's in a wheelchair. So what we normally like to do is to bring him down in a van. He has a, a handicap accessible van, but the van scrapes. Um, basically because these roots have pushed up and created a breakover angle that is steeper. So that um, my wife's Honda Fit, she had a Honda Fit for six years, depending who sat in it, it would bottom out. So the trick to getting home, if you got two people in the car is to get the heavy dude out of it so that we could um, get down without scraping. So my concern about the kind of sensible alternative, the first thing that um, everybody thinks of is to basically build up this section over where the roots are. My concern with that is if, is it basically exacerbates a problem that's already been exacerbated by the roots so that we wouldn't be able to um, but get, uh, so um, right now my wife and I are both driving SUVs. I, I was super interested in the ID Buzz. There's a new Volkswagen Electric man. I saw Elise, my neighbor is online. Her husband and I have been talking about it. Um, I wondered whether I could uh, whether I could buy it. I was interested in it, but one of the conditions of the test drive was to come and test it in our driveway and it bottomed out. So um, I can tell you a Honda Fit bottoms out. I can tell you that my um, my stepfather, his, his van bottoms out and that uh, an ID Buzz bottoms out. So uh, at a loss, the only alternative that I have seen that will basically protect us from the future as well is to remove the roots at least, but apparently we can't remove the roots without the risk of the tree failing. And unfortunately, and if this one fails, it's going on our house. Yep, uh, I don't, we could look at other pictures to kind of give a, a sense of the uh, the, the scope of the problem. So it's a little bit tough to convey here. So what I did is I tried to show before the, the natural slope was following this fence line that you see. So I set out this level. This is a two by six, so that's five and a half inches above. So if you go to the next slide, you can see that at this section it's uh, you know, about seven inches. So it's like having to drive over something about the height of a shoebox at that point. It's a little bit close there. This is a little misleading in that it's right by the fence, but uh, if you show the next one, basically where you do drive, even you want to get away from the fence, car is still bottom out there. So we're basically trying to make the driveway more uh, drivable and make it accessible for a family member who could come down in a van. Um, but right now, basically we, we park up at the top and he comes in a chair and he needs to have somebody strong and confident in front of him. And uh, it takes, basically we need, he's, he's got an, he's got a great chair. Uh, but it's very fearful and we need assistance for him just to be able to roll down in his um, mechanized chair, so. Uh, the only alternative that I see is to remove the tree. I don't think we need any more of those lines. Okay.
Just out of curiosity, how do you get out of your driveway? Do you back up?
I back up, yeah.
It must be entertaining.
Yeah, it, it's uh, it, once you've done it enough times, easy peasy, but um, not for the faint-hearted.
So when your, your father or stepfather um, comes and parks, so you're saying like you basically stop, let him out and then like you go get at the end of the, at the end of the court?
So because his van can't come down to the bottom, so um, he uh, he's got MS. He's become progressively less abled in the course of the last twelve years or so. So it used to be that he would come down in a, in a, a conventional van that was just modified. That wasn't a so-called ADA van. It's just a regular van where we had kind of um, manual ramps. And so that worked. Um, but since he has been upgraded and has much better accessibility for the rest of his life, he can't get his van down to our lower level.
Okay. Um, are there, uh, thank you.
Yep.
Are there um, any other comments here? To, are there any um, people, any, anybody on Zoom?
Yeah, you've got one hand currently, Elise Omernick, that should be able to unmute and speak.
Hi there. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. So yes, this is Elise Omernick from fifty-seven Piedmont Road. Um, hi Steve, how are you?
Hi.
I joined, I joined this meeting um, because I, I do work for uh, Marin Audubon or I serve for Marin Audubon. Um, leading northern spotted owl conservation efforts um, and outreach for our county. Um, and that's why this, when I received the letter, it was um, appealing to me to, to, to speak. Um, and we do live in a, a quite active northern spotted owl zone. And it's correct that the owls did not nest this year, um, unfortunately due to other trees being cut down in our neighborhood. So um, uh, while the, the tree on Steve's property um, is not a nesting tree, um, and I work with uh, Marin County Open Space um, and Blue, um, sorry, Marin County Open Space Ranger Team to collect this data. Um, anyways, I, I just, it's all the redwoods. And like Steve said, we love living in the redwoods. Um, every tree is so important. I see spotted owls in our backyard, up on Piedmont Court. Um, and yes, if we are going to cut down this tree, this is the time to do it before February first. Um, Steve, thank you so much for those extra photos and um, the explanation of why it needs to be cut down, especially for your father. I'm so sorry about that. Um, so I just wanted to say thank you for that and it, it brings a lot of context to why the tree needs to be cut down. And while this is extremely sad, um, I understand. And also for someone who has a very steep driveway, I um,
You do.
I guess, we're all very good parkers in our neighborhood. Um, but uh, I, I um, thank you for this because it helps me understand the why.
All right, thank you very much for your comments. All right. Uh, one more hand up?
Okay, uh, the next person with their hand up is Barbara Salzman, who should be able to unmute now.
Yeah, I'm Barbara Salzman. I live uh, over on Ardmore. I too live and have a steep driveway. I'm going to actually object to removing this tree. Um, um, I'm, I'm president of Marin Audubon. I'm not speaking for Marin Audubon, nor was Elise. Um, but I'm speaking just because I'm a, an interested Larkspur citizen who's lived in a difficult area for many years. I have a number of redwood trees. Uh, they do indeed um, raise up uh, sidewalks. Um, I've had to deal with that. Um, and, and the, the, the story was very compelling. Um, we're all here temporarily. Um, and the, this redwood tree is probably up more than a hundred years old. Um, and it isn't just one redwood tree. It isn't just one tree. A tree is part of an ecosystem. And even if you can, like Elise said, there were other trees removed. You, you look at one tree and you um, uh, you say it's not important, but each one is important because they add up, because you're looking at them each individually. So I, I can't believe that um, seeing lots of redwood trees pulling up uh, sidewalks and driveways uh, that there can't be some solution found uh, for um, keeping this tree as well as uh, allowing the um, the residents to have uh, free movement. Uh, when you get old, that's what I'm doing, we're all doing, it's, it's hard to move around. Uh, so we have to sort of accommodate um, nature sometimes too. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Salzman. All right, do you want to bring it back to the commission? Uh, we start with Tamara, we start with Brock. Oh, yeah, you can sit down. Thank you. Good point. Thank you.
Okay, well, um, this, uh, this is harder than, than I would have thought until I went up there. Um, it's a, it's a beautiful redwood tree. To me, it, it doesn't look like it's that much um, uh, disruption to the driveway and, and whether you could dig down. I mean, it's hard to tell how far down the roots are. Um, if they're right at the surface, yeah, it's going to be a problem. Um, I just hate to cut it down, so that's where I am right now.
I'm the opposite. I went up there and um, definitely not a neighborhood I would live in because those streets are so freaking narrow. Um, I was just like, oh, okay, oh, oh, oh. And we had, we had to stop and let people pass. It's like all the time. Um, I looked at the tree, I looked at the damage that it's doing to the driveway. And I, I'm sympathetic to keeping trees, you know, all the trees forever and ever, but I don't think, I started thinking about this from the standpoint of, would we want somebody to plant this tree there now? And the answer would be no, we would say that's not a good place to plant the tree. The tree is there now, it's, you know, it's impacting the, you know, the driveway and if the solution is to cut the roots, it's going to kill the tree. So either way, you know, it's like, either way the tree goes away, right? So, and to me, I think So either way, you know, it's like, either way, the tree goes away, right? So, and to me, I think you, you do it. You remove it professionally before it gets killed and falls. That's my thought.
Natasha.
Yeah, I would also hate to remove that tree. I think the tree is beautiful and it's absolutely gorgeous. And I'm sure you love it. And I'm sure it's, it's very sad to see it go. But I think on balance, this is your property. You're trying to live there. You're trying to look after it. And it's just going to get worse and the damage it is going to cause is just going to get worse. So I, I actually agree with Brock. It's quite difficult to, to make this decision, but I think I would fall down the side of allowing the tree to be removed. Maybe you could replace it with some fire resistant. Some kind of tree that's fire resistant or something. You could just put something in there that's just, would be just, you know, might, won't be as beautiful as a redwood tree, but you could put something else in.
I do just want to jump in here and say that if that does interest the commission, the code does establish that the commission can require a replant, a replacement tree for the tree that's removed. So you could condition the approval.
Yeah, the, the arborist's report goes into.
Yes. Yep.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So I would, I actually then, I would say that I, I would probably be in favor of having a replacement. I, I couldn't begin to choose one for you, but I, I would be in favor of putting that as a condition.
Yeah, I mean, this, I think I'm more in the, maybe we're divided by sides of the table here, but I, it's, it's a difficult one, right? It's, it's a beautiful tree and, but at the same time, I think that you have, you know, everybody has a right to enjoy their property. I guess I, I, I sort of bring it back to like the findings that we have to make. So we have to make the following two findings. So the removal of the tree will not adversely affect the topography of the land or cause significant erosion or increase the flow of surface water. And I can make that finding. And then the second one is removal of the tree after consideration was given to the number of existing trees in the neighborhood will not adversely affect the general health, safety and welfare, or be detrimental to persons or property in the vicinity. And I think I can also make that finding because that area is pretty heavily wooded. And so in addition to that, we have to make one of the following findings, and they're in the staff report. They're kind of long. I'm not going to read them. The first one is, is that the tree poses a danger, and I don't think that applies here. But the second one is, uh, you know, that the removal of the tree is necessary to prevent unreasonable interference with the property owner's investment-backed expectations. And there's, there are a list of several factors that we need to consider, but I think the one that sticks out to me is that we need to consider the reasonable expectations of the property owner for use of the property. And I think a reasonable expectation for me is that you're able to drive down your driveway. And so I think, you know, while it makes me sad to see a beautiful tree be removed, I think that, you know, looking at the findings that we have to make, I think I can make the findings.
I mean, like Liam and Brock and everybody here, and, and we live here because of the redwood trees. It's one of the reasons we live here. And I also have a house in which, and everybody here knows about, a tree at this size or maybe even bigger fell on my house last year, causing several hundred thousand dollars worth of damage. And so I've seen the ability of, if you start messing with the roots of these trees, they will fall. And that's a hazard to life and property. And redwood trees do fall. I mean, they're, they're shallow rooted. And so if you start messing with the roots, they will fall. So I don't really see any mitigation strategy that you can make that's going to save this tree. I hope you can take it and use the wood. I was not able to do that, and I hope that you are able to do that with your, your, there wasn't an easy way for us to do it. But, you know, because it's, it is beautiful wood and it's like probably an eighty-year-old tree-ish, given it's fifty to seventy-five, seventy-five feet, about, about an eighty-year-old tree. So anyway, I couldn't, I can't say it better than Liam did. I think the findings are met for removal of the tree as much as it does pain me. And I, if Mrs. Salzman's listening, I completely appreciate her concerns and and it doesn't make us very happy to have to say it, but I think this does fall under the conditions. So I could make the findings.
Just out of curiosity, have did the arborist say how far below the asphalt the, the roots were that are pushing it up?
So I think you went to the site. You can see that there's some that are pushing up. So there, there are there are four that are prominent enough to where they crack the asphalt. So there's some of them, they're real, about kind of burrito size or forearm size.
Yeah.
And then there's another one that's right, unfortunately, at the, the rest of the hill that is more sustainable. That's maybe eight inches or something.
Yeah.
So a lot of them are right there at the surface, which also so we were trying to figure out, could we even expose them and try to drive over them and have, we're going to use papers instead of asphalt or they grab with others, if we could use asphalt and, and basically not follow the rest of the guidelines for compaction under the rest of it. Or any repaving, I want to basically pare the substrate in a way that we wouldn't be able to with any of them. So so there are, there are at least some at the surface. I don't know more than that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you could buy time, but how much time is questionable.
All right.
I can make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the heritage tree permit application at a hundred Piedmont Court, H R, H T R twenty-five dash zero two-two, subject to the condition to, to add a replacement tree.
All right. Camera, second.
Is it, what?
Oh, I, I can't second because I don't agree with the replacement tree requirement. Oh, okay.
Do we want to discuss that?
Yeah.
Why, why don't you want to replace a tree?
I think that that's a bad place to have a tree.
It's very, I think it has to be right there.
No, just somewhere on the property.
On the property.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Right, that was. To go there and I was like, yeah.
No, 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 somewhere on the property.
Is that, I mean,
Is that your understanding too, that it has to go somewhere on the property or did they? Do you want to come to the microphone just so it picks up on the, thank you so much on the recording?
I'm concerned that if I put another tree there, I'm going to be having the same problem. The, the art press that wrote the report said, beautiful tree, wrong place for the tree. And so the tree pre-exists, the house, the house is sixty few years old. So I don't think it makes sense to plant a tree right there.
Right. And I think we all agree with that.
Yeah. So we've got lots of other tree. I, I can kind of plant a tree downhill, but don't really have any area other than there that would also potentially, so there's a retaining wall there that is kind of preventing the hillside from the street coming down. That would also not be a good area for the
So it's a question, do you have room for a tree on your property?
Downhill, I do. Downhill or to the side of the house, I do. And I'd be willing to plant one there for sure.
It'd be great. Why don't you work with the arborist to find the perfect tree and the perfect location?
Okay, but and I can put it downhill?
Yeah.
Okay, that works for me.
Is there a reason why we shouldn't agree to that? But you, I, I'm, I don't know why I'm sensing something in the way you're saying it. It's
But, but the reality is, if they want to put a tree down, down slope, they really don't need us to mandate a tree down there. I'd just I'd leave that up to you. If the redwood needs to go, it needs to go.
Right, but if, I'm just saying, take a tree out, put a tree in.
Happy to do that.
Okay.
There are lots of places down slope that make sense to do it. And I'm sure we can find someplace that will work there. And I'd be happy to do that.
I don't really feel strongly about that, actually. Yeah, now that you put it that way.
At your discretion.
But I don't feel strongly either way.
And, and that's fine if I'm not voted on this one, which you don't, you don't care either. Yeah.
At your discretion, then I guess, right?
So it won't be a condition and then we're not going to put it as a condition. We're just a recommendation.
Okay. Okay, then you'll need to amend your
Okay, so I'll remake the, I'll re-propose, re, what am I saying?
Can't do the previous motion.
Start again. I make a motion to, for the heritage tree permit application at a hundred Piedmont Court, H T R twenty-five dash twenty-two, zero twenty-two, with a recommendation to put a replacement tree at your discretion on the property. And now we need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, Commissioner Wagstaff. Very reluctantly, yes. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, another reluctant yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
And Chair Swisher?
Super reluctantly, yes.
Okay, so the motion passes, five yeses and zero noes. This decision can be appealed. There is a fifteen-day appeal period when it comes to tree removal permits and interested parties can appeal by filing the required forms and fees with the city clerk. Thank you.
Is there a term of art for something like this where we all don't want to do it? Like, I feel like I can't, but I got, I got what I asked for, but I don't want to.
Yeah, there's a German, I'm sure there's a German word for it.
Reluctance. Yeah, it's some kind of reluctance.
Yeah, I'm sure. A multi, but thanks for coming in. Appreciate it.
And I just, I just want to say thank you for doing this the right way. We've had some people, some folks where we've heard stuff on this board where folks have removed a heritage tree and then come back to the commission to ask for forgiveness. And so we appreciate you doing it the right way and, you know, thank you. Thank you for coming in.
But if, if somehow you can save some of the wood, it's, it's great wood. But I mean, you're, you're, you're the arborist is, will be able to tell you whether that's possible. Yeah. Sure, a hundred percent.
Just put it in the driveway.
I'll take it. Seriously, I will take it.
Well, sure.
Yeah, sounds good. All right. All right. Right, so next is the approval of minutes.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October fourteen, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
Hey, Commissioner Hall?
I'm staying.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
And Chair Swisher?
Yes.
Okay, the minutes are adopted, four yeses and one abstention.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. All right. Anything else as far as that goes?
I would like to report that the library is going faster than, than expected. And I'm going to get a tour soon. So with Julian, I think, but anyway.
It looks really nice and just want to say, I'll put a plug in for the Refugia Marin, who's putting landscaping, the plantings.
And that there has been a lot of funding raised for landscaping. It's going to be an amazing landscaping job. So it's
Yeah.
Quite, quite a thing.
All right. Next item on the agenda is Planning Commissioner Reports.
That's what I was doing.
I know, that's one. Any others?
This might be a good time to discuss your, I'm hearing some talk about it up there, your next meeting. So just as a general FYI, the first meeting in November, the second Tuesday of November is Veterans Day. So that meeting will be canceled. And your second meeting in November in the past has been canceled because it lands the week of Thanksgiving. In this case, it would be the twenty-fifth.
Correct.
If you would like to cancel it, we can. If you'd like to have it, we can.
Cancel.
Okay.
Cancel, it's my husband's birthday.
Yeah, a lot of us have your way.
Yeah, I'd rather cancel, but I mean, do we have things that are in the pipeline that are waiting to be heard?
You know, I don't think there's anything quite lined up for those meetings.
Okay.
Right now, there are, there are a couple of things that could be heard, but I think the next meeting that you would have would be December ninth, and I don't think there's anything very pressing.
I think I propose we do a December ninth meeting.
And that would be the only one in December, I'm guessing.
So that you'd have one more meeting before the end of the year.
It's fine.
So the twenty-third would get canceled too?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take that off.
Unless you want to have a special meeting. If there, we don't have a ton of stuff in the pipeline that need a special meeting, but
Something we really need to deal with.
For the ninth.
Okay.
I would, I would like to ask a question, though. You were gonna research having a city council person meet with us.
So I have asked the city clerk to get me on a city council agenda in November. So it will likely be November nine, nineteenth, I think, is their meeting. Potentially the first meeting in November, depending on if it's already been noticed or not.
It, it just seems so important because we're, we keep dealing with this over, over and over again, which we did tonight, too.
Yeah, yeah. So it's definitely, it'll get, hopefully they'll, they'll volunteer somebody in November. And then I'll give you two some more information when I have it. I think I mentioned it via email that you, it made when you have members from two bodies technically be a public meeting. So we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it.
Thank you.
Is that, so I, I guess I just want to, while we're here and in session, our, our plan was to sort of hammer out in the subcommittee for F A R, like sort of hammer out of here's, here's our recommendation, right? And then bring it here where we can discuss. Does that sound reasonable to you guys? Or just to avoid sort of like the lengthy discussions that we've sort of had in the past here, we'll get that out of the way beforehand and
Yeah, I think that sounds great.
And we can have a lengthy discussion, but about something instead of deciding what
You're coming here with a recommendation is what you're saying.
That was our plan. We were going to get with somebody from, get sort of like a buy-in or an opinion from city council, somebody on city council.
Yep. Love a focused, non-lengthy discussion.
If you're in charge, I'm sure.
All right. Well, very good. Next item on the agenda is motion for adjournment. Can I see a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
I, I.